See, you always are on, so. It's getting older, it's sometimes tough.
You have to push your button to record you, to turn that mic on, see it?
Up.
Yeah. No, the button in the bottom.
Yeah. When you want it on?
Just want it on. Up there telling guys you turn it off.
That ain't no damn thing.
Well, see, we record the meetings, so anything you might say under your breath, or... Yeah, they're smart.
I ran through two checkpoints over the break. At both times, it was just being sturdy and checking in.
Yeah, they came in in a hot hurry and a hot lead. They came in. Michael came in. In Richmond. And Lenny is in Loudoun County. Now, Lenny, Lenny went on back. It was, he stayed two, three days, but...
I miss Alga.
You pulled me over there one day.
Backdoor Baptist, that's the back road, that's the best.
I said, "Let me see what I can do." I said, "I know how I used to do this." Took me two doors while I was in the general closet.
I'm used to having somebody else start meeting.
I said, "Always one of them open."
That's why this is here. Ladies and gentlemen of the Mecklenburg County School Board, if we'd like to begin our meeting, organizational meeting, tonight, I want to welcome our new members to be with us for the evening. And maybe show them something.
The agenda, just so you know who comes next.
We have to adopt the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, it's just...
It's actually just a roll call.
Just a roll call at this point. Yes, Mrs. Giammario, would you have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ritchie?
Present.
Mrs. Smith?
Present.
Mrs. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Palmer?
Present.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Present.
Mr. Campbell?
Present.
Mrs. Garner?
Present.
Mr. Allgood?
Present.
Mr. Edwards?
Present.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the election of a new chair for this year. I would like to take nominations from the floor for the new chair.
Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to nominate Ms. Dorah Garner to fill that role for the next year.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mrs. Garner. Do I have a second?
Yes, Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to nominate Mr. Gavin Honeycutt, who has served this board well over the last 12 months as vice chair. He's had several opportunities to lead meetings in the last 12 months.
We have a second.
We need a second first, we have to wait for a second.
Yes, do I have a second for Ms. Garner?
Second.
Okay, do we have other nominations from the floor for chair?
Yes, Mr. Superintendent. I'd like to nominate Mr. Gavin Honeycutt to fill that role. He's served this board well over the last 12 months as vice chair. He's had several opportunities to lead meetings in Mr. Sturdivan's absence, and he's expressed to me his willingness to serve and his desire to fill that role, and it is my pleasure and my privilege to nominate Mr. Honeycutt for that position.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any other nominations from the floor for chair? Hearing none, Mrs. Giammario, we should have a vote for the first one nominated, which would be Mrs. Garner.
Mr. Ritchie?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Honeycutt?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Do you want the, okay. Four yes and five no.
Okay, we have not a majority on that nomination. We'll have a nomination or a vote for Mr. Honeycutt.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
No.
Mr. Allgood?
No.
Mr. Edwards?
No.
I have five yes, four no.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know where I see you now.
Yes. I wonder why they should put me at this point.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Honeycutt, his name, we don't want to leave track.
All right, I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Smith, thank you. Let me get back to, okay. All right, at this point, we're moving on to our vice chairman. Do I have any nominees to come before this board on the floor for nominee for vice chairman?
Mr. Honeycutt.
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
I'd like to nominate Dorah Garner as vice chair.
Second.
I have a first and a second for Mrs. Garner as vice chair of the Mecklenburg County School Board. Are there any other nominations from the floor? None being said, Mrs. Giammario, will you please roll call for the vote?
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. The vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Mrs. Garner, as vice chairman of the Mecklenburg County School Board for this year. Yes, ma'am, if you'll come, Ms. Smith and Mrs. Garner will trade seats, please.
No, change chairs.
Change chairs, I'm sorry.
That's right, I'm sorry. She said that was her chair. I take my chair.
I know, I worked with...
That must be a vice chair.
I can take a hint.
I'm going to steal her chair next time.
Well, hello?
Wait a minute, I've seen you all at the campus.
Oh, Lord.
All right, at this time, we're going to be asking for our school board clerk, that Paula Giammario be appointed as school board clerk of the Mecklenburg County School Board. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion for Mr. Edwards, a second from Mr. Palmer. Mrs. Giammario, roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Can I get a motion for our deputy clerk, that Sharon Shuttleworth be appointed as deputy clerk of the Mecklenburg County School Board? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion for Mrs. Bailey, a second from Mr. Allgood. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. A code of conduct for school board clerk. Can I get a recommendation that the school board adopts the code of conduct for Mecklenburg County School Board clerks? Can I hear a motion?
Second.
I hear a motion from Mr. Campbell, a second from Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Do we have a nominee or a motion to nominate anyone as parliamentarian for the Mecklenburg County School Board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Allgood to fill that role. I think he has some previous experience in that, and we really need that since we've been without.
My second.
All right, I have a recommendation that we nominate Mr. Allgood, and a second from Mrs. Garner. Any other nominees from the floor? Is there any discussion from any of the board members?
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, Ms. Bailey.
My thoughts on this particular position, I'm sure Mr. Allgood will serve us well, and I would... Some of my thoughts on this position is that as school board members, we all have an obligation to make sure that we are abiding by rules and the governance of this body. And while a parliamentarian is helpful in providing that guidance, I think we all need to be diligent to make sure that we are going by the rules that we've set forth. So personally, I think that we should all strive to do that, and I'm not sure that we need a parliamentarian, but I would certainly support Mr. Allgood in that position, but I just think it's something for the board to contemplate, that when we are having, conducting our meetings, and if there's something that doesn't seem right to you as a school board member, we all have that right to speak up if we feel like that the rules are not being followed. So I just wanted to preface this vote by saying those things, and we have not had a parliamentarian over the last few months, and I'm not sure that anything is really any different in terms of the way we do business, because we haven't had one. So that's just all I'd have to say about that.
I'd just like to see someone fill that role in case we start acting stupid. We'll have somebody that can, as far as governance, to tell us that we need to change our ways or correct us in some of the mistakes that we do make, and we all make them. I make them, and everybody makes them, so he can be kind of like a police officer or the man that reads the rules to us should we get out of line a little bit.
You sure you want me to make that decision on people acting stupid, Mr. Edwards?
I think you do very well.
I have no problem with what Ms. Bailey said, and if y'all choose not to have one, I'm fine with it. If you choose to put me in that position, I'm fine with it.
So Mrs., I'm sorry, so Mrs. Bailey, is it your recommendation that we not have a parliamentarian, or you were just making that for discussion? I just want to be clear.
Well, according to our policy, we may have a parliamentarian.
Yes, ma'am, that isn't our policy.
It's not mandatory, but, and it's on the... I guess my comment just is that should Mr. Allgood be elected to that position, and there possible, Mr. Allgood, that you will be, that's a lot of responsibility to put on one person, one member of this board, and I think we all have an obligation to hold each other accountable as we conduct business, and to be familiar with our policy and how we are to conduct business. Thank you.
We have a motion, a second, I call for the vote.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Be careful what you ask. I didn't know I could vote for myself enough.
Yeah, you good.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Item G, superintendent's designees, that Mr. Abe Jefferson and Ms. Kristy Pepper be appointed as designees to sign official correspondence for the superintendent in the superintendent's absence. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Edwards, a second from Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Item H, that Mr. Abe Jefferson be appointed as a designee of the division superintendent to attend meetings in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Bailey, a second from Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Item I, governor's school delegate, can I get a motion that... Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Garner to continue her work in that, is that, is a delegate?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Edwards, a second from Mr. Allgood. Is there any discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Item J, governor's school alternate, can I get a motion that we submit a name for an alternate from this school board to serve in that capacity?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Smith.
A second.
We have a nomination for Mrs. Smith, and we have a nomination for Mrs. Garner, and a second for Mr. Ritchie. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Item K, that meeting dates and times shall be established as a third Monday of each month unless otherwise noted. With closed meeting beginning at 6:00 and open public meeting beginning at 7:00, meetings will be held at the school board office in Voitton. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, you may.
Would all of you please look at your meeting dates before you vote on it, and look at the December date? Because of the approval of the calendar...
The new calendar, yes.
The meeting date falls on the first day of our winter break, so it's my recommendation that you choose an alternate date for that meeting.
Our school board clerk has brought it to our attention that our December meeting for 2020 will be on Monday, December the 21st, which is the first day of our winter break. Does anyone have a comment about an alternate date? Mrs. Bailey?
The board of supervisors will be meeting the evening of the 14th, so we probably would not want to do it that Monday night, but it's possible the 15th might be a suitable date. Would that be enough time for finance to get bills ready and all that stuff? On the 15th, it's actually the third Tuesday. Would that suit?
We have a recommendation that we do it the third Tuesday of December, which will be December the 15th, which is on a Tuesday. Any comment or discussion? Hearing none, will, would you make that in the form of a motion, Mrs. Bailey, that we move it to that date, please?
Yes, that we move, I make, I move that we move the December 21st meeting date back to December 15th, 2020.
Okay.
Second.
I have a recommendation from Mrs. Bailey, a motion from Mrs. Bailey, a second from Mr. Campbell. Any other discussion about the meeting dates?
Is the April meeting away from break?
I believe so, yes.
I think the break in April is the second week.
Easter's on the 19th, so we do come back to school on that 20th. Anybody in the room?
Do you have the calendar, Miss Alga?
Give me a minute. December, December.
Everybody just hold over just a second, we'll have our school board clerk look at that date.
Calendar, calendar, option one. Option one. The break that they voted on was the 2nd through the 9th. I think they voted for option one. We voted on option one, so yes, the Easter break is 2 through 9 in April.
That means...
It will be...
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second, again, for changing the Monday meeting to 21st till Tuesday, the 15th of 2020. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. All right, item L, and it says prior to the motion, chairman will recite this statement. As a member of my local school board, I will pledge to honor and uphold these principles ever conscious that public office is a public trust. Can I get a motion that we adopt, the school board adopts, the VSPA code of conduct for the school board members present?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Bailey, a second from Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
No.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
No.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Moving on to number four, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion that the school board adopts the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Bailey, a second from Mr. Ritchie. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes, with exception. I see that we have closed meeting as for the, that's the only thing on there for the... But we didn't spell out why we're going into executive session.
It says personnel matters regarding resignations, retirement supplements, adjustments, employment, grievances, and discipline.
Closed meeting for personnel. Okay.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Number five, item A, can I get a motion that the school board convenes a closed meeting for personnel matters regarding resignations, retirement, supplements, adjustments, employment, grievances, and discipline pursuant to Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3711A1. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Bailey, a second from Mr. Palmer. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. At this time, we will move into our closed session meeting. We can just stay right here where we are, if that's okay, Mr. Nichols? And we will have everyone back in just a few. All right. Can I get a motion that the closed meeting be closed when the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting to which the certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion concerning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mrs. Bailey, and a second from Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Mr. Nichols, number six, we have superintendent's information items.
Yes, give me a second to get back to my... Yes, there was some question about the meeting that we had with the contract for with construction, with Cleveland Construction. And it was my understanding at the last meeting, as we brought that up, we had the money funded by the board of supervisors, and we were looking to take that and approach, that the comment as the, I think it was Mr. Edwards that made the motion, he asked about the contract at that time, and was of the understanding that, as I told him, that the contract was in the hands of the architects, the company, the construction company, and our school the company, the construction company, and our school board attorney, and that, he said, with that in mind, I think the motion that we accept. And so we moved forward, and I understood that to be what would be required to move forward as the board accepting the contract now. That has apparently come into question, and so we have put it on the agenda if the board chooses to go ahead and validate that with a full vote by all of the board as a validation. I think it's a matter of the board to make that decision tonight.
Okay. Board members, any discussion?
I think it's a good move. Next.
All right, anybody else, any other discussion? All right, we'll move on to number seven, action, personnel. Can I get a motion that the school board approves of personnel-
What about the resolution? Ma'am, look, never mind, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ritchie?
Never mind, go ahead.
Again, personnel. Can I get a motion that the school board approves of personnel recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Campbell, a second from Mrs. Bailey. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?